Standing for the invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the free republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dear God, please bless our planning commissioners. Grant them wisdom and courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen. Can we have roll call, please?
Tracy?
Here.
Dennis?
Present.
Kevin?
Here.
Brian?
Here.
Nick?
Present.
Andrea?
Present.
And Rick is absent today.
Does everyone had a chance to review the minutes of the May 8th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting? Any corrections or changes? If not, will entertain a motion?
From the May 8th meeting?
Support?
Moved and supported, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So in our correspondence, we have the notice of public hearing for Armada Township Master Plan. And if anyone wants to view the master plan, they could go to Armada, Monday through Thursday, 9 to 4, or online. Okay. Public comments, anyone here that would like to speak on something that is not on the agenda? Okay, any late agenda items? Okay, introduction, no public hearing, new business. Okay, we'll start off with Legacy Metal and their plan with their revised building elevations. So if you'd like to come up and tell us what is changed?
Good evening, my name's Steve Nickel from Orchard Construction. Terry and Davis have hired us to build the building for them. Once we got involved with it, I realized that we had an issue with part of the building being right where the electric was coming in to the building right now. So what we did is that we modified the roof structure to bring it back down. And then this porch that we have, where the trucks would park underneath, we modified that by creating a reverse gable. And it's smaller than what we were going to do before with just one garage door rather than two. But that area that's right next to that little covered porch, that's where the electric comes in. So there isn't any way that the other building could have even been there. Little bit of an error on the other designer's part, but I think we've got it taken care of. And if you look at the drawings, I think they're pretty similar to what was there. I think really this looks quite a bit nicer than what was going to be there before. And if you have any questions for me, I'll be glad to answer.
All right, thank you.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. I don't believe so.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Could all people talk into the mic so we? You can't hear it on the YouTube if you don't.
The building addition is the same as what it was, we're just primarily modifying the roof.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
If I could, please?
Yes, please.
Um, the township and Cory Mayberry and Legacy Metal had a pre-construction meeting. And when they brought it to our attention that there would be these modifications, engineer Mayberry suggested that it go through the planning commission so you'd know what the changes are. The footprint is still the same, it's just they modified the roof line and they had to move it because of that electrical panel. But everything is basically the same, it's just they wanted to bring to your attention that there were going to be some, this change.
Thank you. I did talk to Cory and he said that he was in agreement with everything that was changed. Like you said, there was no change to the footprint, it was just simply the roof. And however, that gable got turned. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant?
So I guess I'm asking, what is the role of the planning commission? This was approved back in July of last year, '23?
I think what the record need to reflect is acknowledgement of the change and make sure that the planning commission is okay with this and there's no other changes or proposed to this addition. This is just-
For our information.
FYI, right, that is correct. So just something in the minutes that would say that you acknowledged it and you are okay with it. Because I need it for the file to make sure that they can proceed.
So it should be noted that the pre-construction meeting was held with the township building department and our engineer. And the engineer is good with that. And we don't do anything but acknowledge receipt of the update drawings and no motion is required. If I-
No.
Okay.
But something needs to be put in the minutes to that fact. Okay.
All right, so-
Nice looking project.
Yeah, it looks like it's going to be really good.
It'll work up pretty good, it sure will clean up that area.
Yeah, that's going to make a big difference.
Especially with the landscaping that has to go on and the grading and all that along by McDonald's. It'll make it look a lot nicer.
Yeah, for sure.
Busy place, yeah.
All right, is there anyone who has any questions or concerns? All right. So we're all in agreement with acknowledging this update? Anyone disagree? Okay. All right, well, it looks wonderful. Thank you for coming in. I can't wait to see when it's all done. It's been a long path and I wish you luck. Thank you so much.
Good.
Thanks very much.
You're welcome. Okay, so now we're on to Superior Contracting As-Built Site Plan for final approval. Was there anyone from Superior who was able to?
Uh, no, unfortunately George was not able to make it. This is some housekeeping that needed to be done. The plant, um, the engineer had given the planning commission and as-built, but there was no motion, nothing in the minutes that indicated that you accepted the as-built. And I need that for the file.
So this was the, the as-built versus the approved. And it looks like Cory said it was recommended for approval of the final as-built plan for Superior Contracting. So if anyone would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the revised or as-built site plan for Superior Contracting Group. I was looking for, I'm looking for a number here, I'm assuming that's the DLSE number?
DLSE number?
Enter that into the record.
It's been moved and supported, any discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, motion carries.
Okay, I will need it signed by the chair.
Got it.
And then I can just put it in the file and that will conclude that application.
So the signature goes on Cory's letter, Ida? Is that where that goes?
Well, I couldn't find a good spot to put it on the plans. So I just put his review and stapled it with the plans and that way it'll be kept together.
Perfect. Okay. Alex is en route here to discuss the master plan, he was just stuck in traffic. So... Dennis, do you want to move, we can move on to your, to your thoughts and ideas and the goals for your letter?
Yeah, I proposed this early on in the master plan, but I, I was supposed to send the electrons to Alex and I didn't see where I had done that. And my idea here was to consolidate, as I said, the items of six, eight, and nine. Because they kind of all fall under the same thing. And I don't know, just a little bit of housecleaning, I think for that, that goal. I met the pleasure of the planners. I think it all says the same thing, it's just combine some of the tasks together.
So I agree with that, just to combine it. And I like the part about how do we ensure these tasks are addressed and tracked once, once it's finalized?
Oh, that's the email?
Yeah.
See Andrea on that question, it might be more appropriate if Alex was here.
Yeah, when he gets here, we can-
Sure.
We can do that.
Actually, I think our goals and objectives and our tasks are are well-defined and, and good. There's a lot of work there. You start looking at all that stuff. But I think as part of the master plan, I think they look pretty good. All of them.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Without, uh, without Alex here, no.
I guess I have a, just a question that's not pertinent to this, but maybe more to Ida. So, and I might be in the minority being the, you know, younger generation. When I was on the village council, we got our packets electronically as well as a hard copy. Is that, do you already have these digitized? That you can email them before the meeting, or is it only?
No, I, I email everything that's emailed to me, I email it out.
Yeah, yeah, but it's just, okay, that's what I thought sometimes to look, it's just not in a packet.
Oh, what you want is consolidated?
Meeting packet, like that we get. Because it's hard to get up, like for me, you know, with being closed at 2 o'clock, a lot of times it's hard. It was really nice on village.
Sure, I can consolidate it.
The same day the packets were ready, she would send the packet by email. And for me, on the computer, I-
Yeah, no, that's fine, I can consolidate that, no problem.
Just represent it because sometimes it's like, what do we get two weeks ago? And then you're trying to find it through 9,000 emails.
Yes, I agree.
And, and, and I'm trying to find it too, that way, so I get it, I send it out. But if you want, no, I can do that, no.
I would like it.
Yes, that's what I do at work, I scan my packets and send them right out. Everything's all together. Because again, I can't get up here, I don't get home from work till 5:30.
Right.
Fridays are closed.
So how, how far in advance then should those packets be ready to go out? I guess I'm-
I, I mean, I'd be fine with whenever the, the physical one's ready. If the physical one's ready Monday and you send it Monday, because that's the same amount of time we'd get it
Right.
to review it. But like this week, it's Monday, Tuesday. I wasn't around town till 5 o'clock. And I'm like, well, I'm not getting the packet. Like I said, you look at the agenda and you try defining what's relevant, what's not, when you have it electronically, it's nice because you can just click on it and scroll through and have it at the computer.
I disagree, I, you know, I think you can do that now, put it all in here.
And I do too, like I said, sometimes though, for it's just, you know, which one of these 18 pieces of communication from Superior was the latest one and you're looking at dates and scrolling through.
Now we're not all duplicating that same effort if we can do it all.
Right.
Comes that way.
Right. And I figured they were already-
No, I can, it's just never, no one's ever asked me that before, so, no, I can do that.
Great, that sounds great, thank you, Ida. So Alex, we were discussing our goals and strategies and in combining strategies six, eight, and nine?
Six, eight-
Or six, it's probably six, seven, and nine. Six, seven, eight. So the bottom strategies, we were talking about just combining them into into one, because acquiring the land, recycle center, things like that, the placement of all utilities underground, I think that kind of goes along with if we get any land or if we can do that.
Sorry, dudes, which, which goal are we on?
Six, did you get the email from?
I did, I printed it out right here, it says, from Dennis, six, six, right?
Yep.
Page. And we have here goals. Last one, is it? It's goals, develop plan, maintenance, public facilities, right? Is that the one we're talking about? Okay, so six, eight, and nine, we're going to-
Or six, seven, and eight, I think.
Six, seven, eight.
Is it six, seven, and eight, or is it maybe three or four, because instead of six, because three and four are the utility, discuss utilities along with seven and eight.
So we're going to remove or combine six, seven, and eight?
I think we definitely want to move utilities underground.
I think it was three, four-
Up to-
Seven and eight. Go together.
So the sewer and water items can just be combined together? And probably the master stormwater drainage plan. Can we, how would everyone feel if we kind of put that all together? Combined it, anything with the sewer, the water, anything like that, so it's all in one spot?
Can we just take whatever, what Dennis provided for his proposed number six, the task may be together?
I don't think we're talking about six anymore, I think we switched it up.
We were talking about, so, well, three. Talking about sewer and water. And then then the master stormwater drainage plan. Can we put that with the sewer and water, just keep everything with water together? Okay. Yeah, three and eight. And then, yeah. And then what was the other one, Dennis?
I have three and seven in mind. So seven is considered the need for measure stormwater drain plan, address existing anticipated surface water drainage problems?
Yes, that, to go with three.
So three and seven would be combined together?
Are you looking at?
I have a different number in.
I think we have different copies.
Yeah.
Are you looking at mine or the master plan? The master plan. Yeah, she's becking a master.
Oh, we're looking at Dennis's.
We're looking at-
The back side of his email.
The, yeah, one side's the email and one side's like, his writing.
Yeah, right there.
This right here?
Yeah.
So I'm looking at the master plan. But for this goal, we're looking to change the strategies to what Dennis is proposing, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And then in addition to what he's proposing, move eight, combine eight with number three on the back of Dennis's, with Dennis's proposed items.
So the master plan, master plan number seven became Mike, number eight? Right.
All right.
Okay. So just put that in there. Okay. Because I got a question.
Yeah, let's move on, go ahead.
Under strategies number one, Alex, can you give me an example of what shared responsibility provided public services might look like? I mean, we have our own fire department, first responders, police department. Are there other things that would fall into that category? I'm trying to think.
Are, are EMS would be considered shared, what not?
EMS, yeah.
And our police is shared, right, with the village?
It's the village police department.
Oh, I took adjacent communities to be like Dryden or-
Well, I think the Himalayas.
The Annapolis. Okay.
Okay.
I think the other public service, I mean, we're missing in, in Almont is urgent care. I mean, with Bruce Township closing down, where's everyone going? Is there a way that we can, I don't know, bring that to us, some kind of?
Number five, maybe? Andrea?
Emergency services. And urgent, maybe, can we add urgent care? Urgent care for residents? And then maybe with that in our master plan, could we be eligible for any kind of state grants? For being a rural community without a healthcare facility nearby? So different things, if we put in our master plan and we do, you know, if we're a redevelopment-ready community, or we're a Tree City USA, or we're something, we can get these grants. Like they just let townships join to get for a Tree City USA, so you get like free trees and free things like that. So is there a way for us to somehow get some sort of support being a rural community with no healthcare? So I don't know if we add this all to our master plan. Hopefully it could qualify us for-
You want to add which, you want to add it under this?
Like under five, plan for the most efficient and effective method of providing emergency services slash urgent care? Or medical care?
We have no medical care.
Medical care, urgent care.
Really, we have no medical, because there's no doctor's office anywhere.
Nothing, nothing. There's any way we can help our residents?
So we're going to do services, medical care, and then any other slashes or additions? I guess Alex, the other question that was proposed, Andrea brought up before you arrived, was the discussion on how do we ensure these tasks are addressed and tracked once the master plan is finalized and approved? Right, so this is your, your long list of all the goals that, you know, that have been shared and discussed and talked about these things. Your implementation plan is really your shortlist, right? Those are the things that of the, you know, 11 things you guys want to kind of accomplish. If in the event that something comes up that supports something or not, you can point to your master plan and say, hey, this is our vision document for the community. This is what we want to happen, this follows the line. Or on the opposite side, and then contrary to your vision document, say, that's not what we want. And we discussed this and we all approved and agreed in our master plan that this is what we don't want. So it's not like, it's not like you hold your feet to the fire, it's a vision, it's a goal, it's an aspiration. Rome wasn't built overnight. You know, what you're required to do is, you know, enforce the zoning ordinance. And the zoning ordinance follows the master plan, so that's probably, I mean, if anything, that's a requirement. This is a goal and a vision of what you guys want to achieve, you know? So I think the thing is, sure, it's maybe long, but you know, unlike other master plans you may have seen in the past where they're just general statements. They don't really have teeth, if you will, they're just, okay, great, I guess. But this is more goals, different strategies you can take and also, you know, putting in their tasks of actual, you know, tangible things you can do, so. As you cross off things from your list, and I'm sure you guys will probably be, your high capacity will probably cross off 10 of 11, and then you add another 10 on 11. You know, and, and move on, so it's like, it's just a living, breathing document that you guys can look at and review as to what you think's more important.
Thank you. Any other questions for Alex? So do we want to go into the land use maps?
Yes.
All right.
I brought off, brought and turned off several maps for those who may recall, may not recall. Really, it's a discussion about the existing land use and then of course, the future land use map. I'll pass this one along and I'll come back, just a couple more, so.
Thank you.
Could I have one, please, for Mr. Dodge?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
You can add it up. I'll just leave these up here. Tax identification.
Thank you.
Okay, so what we have, I have to give myself these maps, too. So the purpose of the existing land use map is just documenting again what you have in your community, right? So originally we have this tax identification map as a basis for the existing- So originally, we have this tax identification map as a basis for the existing land use. As just a refresher, this is the same information that would be shared to us in GIS to create a GIS existing land use map. Like I said many times over, fortunately, Paul had the foresight to purchase this, have it on record to use it because unfortunately, Lepire County is continuing to be, GIS is down still. It probably will be now and not into the fall as well. So it's going to be well over a year. So that's unfortunate. But fortunate for you guys, you guys do have the information. Tax identification code obviously has agricultural, commercial, industrial, residential, which is either, you know, proved or vacant, but that's pretty simple to understand what's there and what does it be taxed as. Despite the fact that there's a lot of yellow on there, it is zone agricultural, those most of those parcels there. We're not proposing a zoning map change. That still stays as-is, along with all the other parcels that have been rezoned throughout the years. But we're just documenting what is the existing land use out there right now. And what we can see is most of the agriculture properties that you have are not necessarily for farming purposes, they're not being taxed as agricultural, they're single-family homes. They may have their personal farm, it's wonderful, I'm envious, I wish I had that much land to do that. But we're not proposing any changes. We're just documenting right now what's out there going on in your community. So you have an understanding of how to develop your goals or strategies or what you, what is it you want. We pretty much know based on the input from the community, the surveys, the planning commission, that it's a great community, you want to keep things pretty much close to similar with minimal change going forward. Or there's any dispute in that. What we would do is then develop your future land use map. And so we developed a draft existing land use map based on most of the information from, from the 2008 plan. And that's what you have right now in your draft plan. The future land use map, the draft vote, which is in your draft plan, is really, what it's used for is a goal, is in terms of what uses you want on those individual parcels. And it's, the consensus has proven pretty much that if it's zoned agricultural, it should maintain its agricultural zoning status. And that's pretty much reflected in your future land use map. Because what, you'd use your future land use map as reference when someone comes for you for rezoning. And considering that you want to leave most of the township agriculturally zoned, with the exception of the areas to the south as single-family, low residential, and only the, you know, Van Dyke corridor that has parcels that are either commercial or industrial. So what we're trying to figure out, one, is if we're going to keep the current draft existing land use map that's in the draft master plan? Or if you want to change that draft existing land use map based on the tax identification codes? It's up to you. Obviously, you would need to then update the chapter to reflect the statistics and what's been documented. And the other part of that, the other side of the point is, if, if any, do you want to change your future land use map? I think the future land use map should consider the parcels that have been recently rezoned on your zoning map. So that those parcels continue to be, whether they're commercial or industrial or so on and so forth, right? Because it's rezoned. So, you know, it's up to you guys, what you feel is best for your community. For the planning commission to decide, you know, what is the accurate representation of existing land use. And also, you know, if, if you want to add your future land use map with more agricultural properties, I don't think that's really of great concern. I really don't. Because they're already zoned agriculture as it is. It's just making sure we have the accurate depiction of the commercial industrial properties out there right now. And as you can see, there are a number of parcels in the township that are either industrial or commercial, that are not in your future land use map. I really don't have the data or information to search what's there because GIS mapping is down, but to like further investigate it. So I kind of leave it up to you guys to decide, you know, what it would be. Any changes to the map.
Thank you, Alex. Alright, would anyone have any thoughts who would like to start off?
So Alex, the Almont Township tax classification map. That's the most accurate depiction of how the land is actually being used. Is that how I understand it?
Yeah. So just so you understand the relationship between existing land use, future land use, and zoning map. Existing land use is just what's going on, what's going on out there right now. Okay? There's not really much to decide on that, it's just, it is what it is. Your future land use map tells you what it can be in the future. So that's not right this minute, it's just what it could be in the future if someone's rezoned. Your zoning map, which is not part of a master plan, which is tied to your zoning ordinance, is telling you what they're allowed to do with it right now, right? What can they do? So you could have a residential property, but on the zoning map, it could be zoned commercial. So in the future, they could knock down the house, come before you and propose a commercial use, right? Based on the future land use map. I mean, based on the zoning map, if the zoning map says that, right? So.
So you're talking about the, this, this Almont Township, Lepire County zoning map? This one? It's been dated down here last one, March of 23?
Mm-hmm. That's your, what does it say there, Dennis? Sorry.
It says, Almont Township, Lepire County zoning map was last updated on March of 2023. That's one Ida.
That's the one Ida shared with everyone.
Right, yes.
I don't have that in front of me at the moment. But, yeah, that's the one that's your, you know, I think that reflected the rezoning of what is now the proposed or the industrial storage facility. That was the last time, all that time.
Yeah, Superior, Superior Contracting up there, C3 at the top, at Webster Road.
So we need to decide if we want to keep our future land use map as-is, as you presented, or if we want to change anything. So for example, right now, it's all the residential low is actually zoned agres, right? But this is our future land use, so it is, we are expecting smaller residential areas in that.
No, you're not, I mean, nothing's really changing.
Okay.
Because the zoning map says you need to have two acres on those sites. So your future land use map doesn't have single-family much of anywhere besides around the village, right? If you're in the northern part or eastern edge or western edge, despite the fact that you're using it for a single-family purpose, you can't divide it to a smaller parcel because the zoning map wouldn't allow it. And more importantly, you couldn't propose a rezoning because your future land use map doesn't, doesn't fall in line with this future land use map. Because part of the rezoning process is what does the future land use map say? So it really is up to you guys to say which one is really the existing land use and if you want to change anything to the future land use map. Because I do think the future land use map, the draft map, does reflect, for the most part, the goals of the township. Making sure we maintain these large lots for agricultural, low-density residential purposes. And then it's a matter of what parcels along Van Dyke should be either industrial or commercial. This is really just the question. So it's either keeping the map for your draft master, master plan for existing land use to keep this one, or say, no, we're going to recognize this, which we would change because you have vacant and so on and so forth. We would merge those into just, you know, combine whatever ag to ag. Because you have approved or vacant, you also have commercial approved or vacant. You have industrial approved or vacant. You would just merge those together to just industrial, commercial, agricultural. And you would just have a map that reflects this data? Or you would just keep the one you already have in your plan right now? So either or of those, and then this would pretty much be your map, given that you don't, there isn't any other changes that you see fit along the corridor that are commercial or industrial. Because I know, one of the planning commission members noted that, that all those parcels aren't or are not. But this future land use map does take in consideration the data that was provided by Ida that were rezoned properties, right? So you can keep it as it is and you can choose between the two options of the existing land use.
In the proposed draft land use, future land use, so the, the, all those areas surrounding the village and then south of the village on the Van Dyke corridor, if I'm understanding you correctly, the residential areas in that whole, let's call it two mile by two mile swath, they can basically subdivide down into two acres or whatever we establish. Is that correct?
Given that they're following the zoning ordinance requirements? And given that they're following state statutes for subdivision as well? Which is proposed subject for change, but it has not. So, yes, that way you could theoretically increase housing, but at a single-family scale as opposed to a multifamily scale, that's a possibility. But as you can see, some of the parcels in your existing land use based on the tax specification are not single-family, they are actually still agriculturally proper, properties, right? So we could make some of those changes. But like I said, we're, we're trying something, we're trying to do something right now with the, trying to create maps without proper data from the county, which we typically would have, right? But. Yeah, that's your zoning map right there. Yeah, we could definitely move some of those parcels there. So, yeah, we could change, we could change the future land use map. For sure.
My, my opinion on the matter is, so the existing land use map, we, we're almost in a position where we're spot zoning. And I, I get the, I get the advantage of having residential grouped into one area. And then that way, we're not approving every little parcel of land that wants to get converted into residential. And I, I think that does have an advantage over the existing land use map. I, I do like the existing land use map as our exist, it's using it as our existing, just for the sake of, even though it, it might be used differently. I, I think what we, what we intend on going with in the future, I, I think it's driven from this existing land use map of what, what it's zoned for. But the, the one thing on the land use map that, you know, the proposed land use map that I, I have a little bit of struggles with is the, is the amount of land that we're allowing to go from agricultural to residential. And specifically, like, I, I've used this, used this example before, but like, say, like the Brookwood Orchard or Lake's Backyard, that sort of area could eventually be. And I'm looking, I'm thinking well beyond 10 years from now, turning into a very heavily subdivided area. And so if that, if that's the case, then do we, is it really, does it give that orchard feel? You know, when, when we moved Almont Township, you know, the big thing I, I enjoyed was the, the open spaces to, to stretch my arms. And, and I think that's, that's kind of what the spirit of the, of the survey that, that you folks did. I, I think that, that aligns with that as well. But that, that, that's kind of my two cents on the, on the question.
I, I agree too. I think our residents wanted us to try to keep as much ag residential and bigger lots. I think that was like the whole basis. Everyone wanted that, that's why they moved to Almont. They don't want subs, they don't, they don't, they want, they're, they don't mind building, but they want it to be spaced out. So I think whatever we can do to show that on our future land use, I think would be a benefit to, to our residents.
Is there a way to, like, maybe, because, because what we, the issue we have right now is that we, we have residential speckled throughout the township. And being able to determine whether or not to approve another rezoning to residential, you know, is there a possibility we could even determine a residential density or something along those lines where you have, I don't know, you have to have residential spaced out by agres so often or by, by percentage of land within a one square mile area or something like that? I don't know if anybody, any other townships or villages do that.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of challenging to go that route. But, yeah, I, I do understand you guys, I mean, the future land use map was kind of the direction was, well, just keep the parcels along the villa, around the village as, you know, potentially single-family. Now, what we could do is just simply take your tax identification code, this existing land use. Use that as your template for existing land use. Use this similarly for your future land use. And if it's not, you know, pretty much remove most, if not all, of the yellow on the map. And keep the areas that are, which ironic is that the zoning map, I don't know, Dennis, do you mind me seeing that zoning map there? I mean, how many parcels do you have that are actually zoned, single-family? Is there? Yeah, not much if any, just a few spots.
Can we just, can we just turn this yellow like all green?
Right, that's, yeah, with, with the exception of, of the couple that are, that are on that zoning map that we know that are actually yellow. So.
How does everyone feel about that? Would that be?
Pretty easy.
The board, are you in agreement?
I think, I think I would. I mean, that's something that we talked about a little while back and then seemed like we almost stepped back from it was that R1A, making that bigger and making the two acre bigger. And I know that Corey said, well, you know, that's not going to happen with well and septic. But then in our goals and strategies, we have extending. But then in our goals and strategies, we have extending water and sewer.
Sewer, yeah.
Well, if you extend water and sewer, in my mind, all of a sudden you open the floodgate for R1A and 30,000 square foot lots. And I know that's not exactly what we're talking about right this second, but that kind of, you know, stemmed into it. He kept saying, oh, no big deal, no big deal. And I get the future goals and strategies are long-term, but if we're looking at possibly bringing in infrastructure, what's to change? You know, what's to not have anything that's R1A come to fruition? You know, and all of a sudden then you have, you know, a whole bunch of half-acre lot subdivisions that are not much, that's not much bigger than Drakeshire, which is nice place, you know, but it's not with the township.
What they want.
If, I don't know if you have it in front of you, I have it on my computer, but for some reason, the village council's logged in. Your future land use map, your 2018 master plan was just that right there.
Yellow.
Right. It was yellow all along here. That's what the 2018 master plan has. So that was a basis for creating that map in that fashion.
I'm all for turning as much of that yellow green, turning the yellow to green as much as we can of, I mean.
Just what?
Making it agres instead of residential low, as much as we can.
In, um, in your, in the, uh, the master planning document that you put together, there, there was one part that I want, I had a question on. You, on page four dash two, under the residential area, you had mentioned agricultural land or residences on greater than five acres of lands constitutes the largest amount of area in the community. Do you have by chance any like data on that? Like, what, like, what, what largest is, is it like closer to 50%? Or, you know, is it more like 80 or 90? I'm sorry to put you on the spot like this, but.
4.2, right?
Yeah, four dash two, under residential, second paragraph. Talking about that residences on greater than five acres of land. Just didn't know if you had any.
Yeah, that's just based on the parcel data. So each of these parcels in the.
Is that the 80 percentile, 50 percentile, do, do you know off the top of your head, sorry?
So, no, I don't, I don't know off the top of my head. I could just tell you the way you would probably, it's coming up with that number is because as you look, you do have a number of parcels that are pretty large, right? So given that most of the land in the township still has, you know, quite a bit of acres to it, right? So that would just be, that would be just reflected in the parcel data.
The, the only reason why I ask is, I'm wondering if that could help drive the discussion on how we, because the other part of this discussion is what's parcel size? What should that look like? And I, I think there's been some discussion on that back and forth. And my thought is, okay, well, what does it look like right now? And could that help drive a decision on, on what we, part of the zoning classification?
Do you mean like for your zoning plan, like what would be acceptable for?
Yeah, because I, I think we would just arbitrarily chose two acres for residential. But then when I saw that, I was like, oh, wow, I didn't realize that there was that many that were over five acres. You know, does, does two acres look right? Does five acres look right? That, that was just something that I had thought as I was reading this over.
I thought two acres came from when it changed from 330 feet to 165 versus the width versus depth ratio, I think was how two acres came. I don't know what it was before, but the minimum frontage before was, it was 330 or bigger, because I believe 165 just came from half of what it used to be. I, I don't know. The ratio's in the ordinance somewhere, because they can't be, you know, a mile deep and 165 feet wide.
Sure.
Thoughts or comments regarding the map? Okay, so is everyone in agreement to move that to the yellow, as much yellow as possible to agres? To agri, agricultural residential to, to?
From residential low.
Yeah, from residential low, so it'll be a bigger, okay.
Will you want to keep the ones that are currently zoned, single-family?
If it's zoned, single-family, yes. I, I say keep it because that's going to.
Clear the zoning map for those changes.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
And then for the existing land use, what's the decision on that?
It's announced.
Yeah.
And I don't, I don't, I, I mean, we could, we could beat this thing like a rented mule for the next, you know, six months. If this is what we've got, this is what we've got.
You're talking about the tax classification?
The existing.
Yeah.
I agree.
All right.
So in the master plan, it would identify that that's, as opposed to current land use map, it would identify that it's based on tax classification, specifically exactly what this is saying, rather than?
I wouldn't say that. It would just say this is your existing land use map. It's just, the, the thing is, is I put that on there just to, to stand where it's coming from. The GIFs for existing land use would use tax identification as the basis for determining the existing land use, right? So, um, that's all, that's all it is. It's just telling you what's going on out there, who's being taxed, because you have some of these parcels that I can't really tell you what's going on. But, you know, you have this.
Skylight camp. That, that is commercial.
Okay. So that's, that's commercial. And you have this industrial improved up here, Webster. I'm not sure what's going on out there, you know, and you have other industrial-type properties there. But regardless, your future land use map, you know, says, you know, it's going to be agriculture in the future. And for some reason it's not working, but if I turn this around, perhaps you are able to see it. But this is your, your future land use map from your 2018 plan. Obviously, the colors aren't great, but the yellow areas are ag. And then all of this here, just like this map, is, you know, single-family residential. You just pretty much kept the same thing and then added the ones that got rezoned. But if you do want to change all of these back to ag, with the exception of the ones that are actually zoned, single fam, uh, you know, single-family, that's up to you guys.
Yeah, yes, we do. And then, everyone in agreement with using the tax map for the existing land use map? All right.
So here's what it is.
All right. All right, so we, we're done with the maps. We're done. All right.
Copy that to that.
Yes.
We have to rewrite the existing land use chapter and add the maps, put it on there.
Okay.
So it's a little bit of work.
Yes.
Okay, I'll let her understand that.
We understand that. Yes.
I'm just sorry. I'm going to go back and tell my person that's my mapping, and they're going to copy happy. It's a fine one, so, but we're in business for it.
All right, excellent.
So I'd like to circle back to what Nick said in one of our goals and strategies that we just talked about. Number three is consider the expansion of the village's sewer and water system with the possibility of future development of township system. I think Nick was right that that encourages smaller lots.
I mean, I'm all for the infrastructure.
Right.
I just, I, I just keep going back to what Cory kept saying. You don't need to worry about changing any of that, because with well and septic, you know, you gotta have an acre, acre and a half anyways. But then in our goals and strategies, we're like, hey, look, maybe we can get water and sewer. Well, guess what? Then we don't need well and septic. And then you're needing well and septic and needing an acre, acre and a half to do it, just went out the window, because I had a 15,000 square foot lot when I lived in town with water and sewer.
I asked my question, should we strike that?
I, I don't even think that. I think that would be great, especially going up the corridor for commercial industrial.
Oh.
But, but.
Personally.
Along, along with that, it wouldn't make a difference, because if you're going to change your future land use map to primarily just agricultural zone property in that area, you couldn't, you couldn't, you know, maybe you would bring water to your existing single-family home, but it wouldn't be, you could theoretically take some of the larger parcels that are, say, six acres, and bring them down to three, two acres. Theoretically, you would possibly get a few more. Now, that's a lot of variables between planning and zoning and subdivision and whatnot, because you have to have road frontage or access agreements and so on and so forth. But there's still that possibility, but you limit it because your future land use map would be primarily agricultural residential and have a two-acre minimum.
Yeah, I think that stemmed more off of the zoning map with the areas that were R1A. You know, like what Sal's doing on Kitter, which fine will be nice, but he could have done even smaller. If there was water and sewer, they wouldn't have, they wouldn't be the size that they are now, because they would have the infrastructure.
Right.
All right.
That was where I think you almost, I, if you hit it on both fronts, on the map, and then you adjust your, you know, your minimums on that, it would keep you going in the direction that you wanted, even if you brought the infrastructure, made the infrastructure available. Because I think we'd attract a lot more businesses. You hear that's one of the gripes of not having, especially sewer. They don't mind a well, but the huge thing is septic. I mean.
As an, as an industrial user, the water's terrible.
Well, yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, depending on what you're, if you're not just using it for bathroom and that, but I know.
No, we're using it in industrial processes. It's terrible. It's very, very costly.
Right.
I think we should definitely keep it, because what if there's any kind of grants or any kind of funding available for?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I'm not against that at all. That just kind of sparked it again to me of, well, hold on, that was our, not saving grace, but that was kind of the loophole that made it, you know, kind of pop back into my head.
On a positive note about the water, having hydrants reduces insurance rates.
Certainly.
Especially for commercial and industrial. I mean, when you've got to put a quarter of a million-dollar cistern in to, to have a 10,001 square foot building, that's, that's a big pill to swallow.
All right. All right. Any other comments, questions for Alex? Anything else with our goals and strategies? I think you did a wonderful job on this. I'm telling you, this is so much work. I know. Thank you.
Appreciate it. It's you guys' input and work too, so I think you guys get a lot of the credit. You know, hopefully this is something that works for you guys going forward.
All right, well, since there's no more comment, we can move on. Cory's not here, so we'll move to Tracy. Any ZBA business?
Nothing.
Nothing? All right, all right, on to Ida for zoning and building report, please.
Okay, so are you having another rough master draft? Or are we getting closer to a public hearing? Because I keep getting questions from the board.
So. Almont's slow their roll. There are so many communities that aren't even done with their master plan.
So we would have to prepare a new draft, because we were, we were, we're making edits to the goals chapter. We're making edits to the existing land use chapter. We're also making edits to the future land use chapter, which also includes the subsequent maps, so.
That will be on July, is it, John? And I think the only other item I have is the communication tower. They sent their updates today, and I sent that out to everyone.
They're going to be on July?
Well, it depends on the reviews, but.
Okay.
Yeah, they're looking for July.
Thank you. All right, we can move on to Planning Commission General Comments, Solar Farm Review. Dennis?
Yeah, so I think everybody got our write-up. And Kevin and I went out and visited the DTE facility up here. And I think everybody got the write-up?
Yes.
I don't know what the pleasure of the planners are as far as looking at our current ordinance for commercial solar energy versus what we found out there at the DTE facility. DTE was, to me, I don't know about Kevin, but they, they said in my write-up, it's a permitted use, so you're going to deal with it. I don't know that Almont Township is likely. I mean, it could happen, but the facility as large as the one out there, that's all on city of the fair property lease to DTE. But the representatives were very sensitive to the surrounding residential homes, water runoff, noise. And they offered to, to help massage any ordinance requirements you wanted. So I don't know what the pleasure of the planners are to try to do something with our commer, our current ordinance for commercial. I think it could stand some cleanup.
Dennis, you talking to me or planners?
No, I'm talking to planners. See what they want to do, let them move forward with.
Planners or?
Oh, all of us.
Oh, the plant commissioner.
Commissioners.
Kevin, do you have anything to add to that?
I, I, I do, I would just like to add that I was pleasantly surprised. I, I have firsthand experience with a large solar facility in my building. And it was very ill-prepared, very, um, very haphazardly constructed, and in many ways not, um, it's not germane to this type of project, but I, I was very, I'm, I'm giving some background. I was very skeptical of its efficacy and its presentation to the public. DTE has a world-class facility there. And it's, what was the age of it, Dennis? Seven years?
Yeah, seven, eight years old.
Seven, eight years old, and it, it is world-class by today's standards, even still today. So they were very forward-thinking, in my opinion. And, and they are very forward-thinking if they were to come to your locality or municipality. I agree with Dennis that we should massage what the current zoning ordinances are, or at least make sure that they fit with the, the general outline of the area. And I, I would fully support, in the same vein that they've done there, any future growth in that area here, because you don't even know it's there, unless you know it's there.
Take you up to Goodland Township, give a speech.
Is that going on up in Goodland Township?
Hold on, I'm just going to, it's, it's a big year. I mean, I, happy to help you guys. I mean, I've written several zoning, zoning ordinances regarding solar prior to the new state statutes and after the state statutes. What you're looking at is you can regulate the, um, the screening of the facility.
And it's, I didn't mean to interrupt Alex, but to bring that up, it maybe was the natural landscape that was already there that allowed it to fit so well. I, I can't say that, because I don't know what it looked like before. But, um, yeah, it's, uh, it's very well, in my, in my opinion, it's very well laid out, very, um, very, well, you know, first-class operation.
Yeah, I have to agree with Kevin. It seemed like there was only one area that has residential homes that backed up to the, the rest of it was. the rest of it was natural screening of rather large wood, wood area.
There's some, there's some, they planted some trees there too as well.
Oh, they did, along the residential side.
Yeah.
But the rest of it was, yeah, pretty much natural screening. And like I did in my write-up, uh, DTE located their uh inverters more towards the center of the field because of the noise, which we didn't hear any noise when we were standing next to it, but at times, they say, I suppose when those fans are on, they can be rather noisy, and the closest resident was four hundred feet away. One of the ladies in the group that we took the tour said that another company that designed a field similar to that, maybe not as large, their inverters were on the property line, and it was nothing but noisy to the residential homes. So DTE, I think, I agree, it's just an exceptional design. Um, you don't hardly know it's there. And they do, they're very uh conscious of residential homes, water runoff, noise, um
Decommissioning. They, they have a, they have a very solid decommissioning plan.
Right.
So under the state, so the state law now regulates the decommissioning, the percentage of what's, you know, to be bonded, right? So all of it's pretty very much regular under state statutes now, but what you can do is, is just pretty much cite uh state statutes, but also um come up with what you deem to be the appropriate screening method. Because, yeah, it's rolling topography there. You don't see it. There's natural tree lines, but if they're right smack in the middle, and Almont's relatively flat, um, as opposed to Dryden, which is like really hilly, so you know, would you want, you know, two rows of trees staggered, you know, twelve, ten feet or twelve feet of planting, you know, to minimize that? I mean, that's up to you guys. That's not in the state statute, so um you can determine that. Whatever's in the state statute, you can't determine. Um, but, you know, DTE sent a memo out, uh, for whatever it's worth, a while back, to communities they're working with, um, that they're trying to be, you know, a good neighbor and, you know, mitigate some of the concerns, but um yeah, you know, the noise thing is, has been issues in some places where you're right, that there is noise concerns. Um, some of the new technology has less of that. I'm not really sure. I'm not an expert to speak on it, but I'm just hearing this from conversations with other communities and uh operators, so um I do think it's prudent to, to make sure your ordinance is in place. Um, makes it a lot easier. That's not to say that um if an applicant did come before you, you couldn't um require those things. There is language within your zoning ordinance that you could, you know, uh, request. But um, you know, if you're asking for thirty-foot berms in a twenty-foot space and things like that, they might contest those things. But if it's within reason and the interest of public policy to welfare, it's within your purview, but making a tax amendment, it's, it's your decision, but um some communities are just kind of waiting to see what happens, because they're confident it's gonna get repealed, but I have to say, their attorney in Goodland, and yours as well, and I've talked to him quite often and recently, and we live in a world of, well, what is, not what might be, so the law is here, and that's what we have to work with as opposed to if it gets repealed.
Um, have you seen any movement on this in the areas that you're working with? I mean, as far as people wanting to come in and do it, other than DTE?
Oh, yeah, there's definitely a lot of them. Doing now is just anecdotal information. They're, they're looking and talking to prospective property owners who are in agreement that, hey, if, if a, if a project comes your way, you'll lease my land for X amount for so many years, so on and so forth, right? So the, um, but it is, um, I think a lot of operators are waiting until, I believe, November, December, till it does take effect, to then do what they can do. I, I think they're just don't wanna, you know, for lack of a better term, waste bullets, you know, right now, or on, on, you know, trying to get their opportunity around, wait until they know what certainties they have um in place, so end the election and so on and so forth. So you may see things really pick up in the spring, or soon after, soon, you know, in the winter, is my thought.
But does the state statute address things, uh, these fields larger than fifty kilowatts? So in order to protect our community, our, our ordinance, I, in my opinion,
Yeah.
should state something regardless of the size of the field. I mean, we got a sixty-foot buffer. That was a hundred foot over there. And I think getting back to Kevin's question was that if somebody else were to build other than a DTE, that those inverters could be just anywhere. They don't get, they don't care.
Yeah, there is noise. I, I'm not, I, I don't have it in front of my possession of a car. Um, but it, there is noise in there, uh, but you're right. I mean, one operator could come up with a proposal that, right, it's hard to to regulate certain things. They may propose things. You may ask, hey, you know, we're good with everything else, but could you move that? The, the thing is, is there's a mega watch threshold between, they can go straight to the state
Right.
and not even have to, you know, get their permits, like in essential services, and just circumvent the plant commission. If they're below that certain megawatt, then they could, they have to come in front of you. However, as the law is written, if they're not happy with the process, they can take their basketball and go play and go, go to the state and ask for permits, uh, but they have to exercise this process. And all of it really stems from the fact that for a long time, we've tried to expand our, our energy output in Michigan for manufacturing and for a lot of reasons. Um, energy independence, those sorts of things, and it's been very difficult in a lot of places. It's not just Michigan, but to get projects done, so they petitioned the powers that be at the state, and now this is the new law for the land. Um, it is ironic that some of the communities that are, you know, rural suburban places that are um, kind of get away from it, if you will, you know, they kind of, kind of, because of geography and space and whatnot, but um, I do think it's best prepared um in the event, but that's up for you guys to decide.
I, I guess that would be my recommendation as well, is we need to take a closer look at what we've got. I don't like the sixty-foot buffer. I'm not sure what a buffer is, but a setback makes more sense, and that one over there was a hundred feet, and then
The state, I think, has it right now, I think, a fifty or sixty, so you can't make it larger than a hundred, than fifty or sixty feet.
Hundred was
Thirty feet, I think it's thirty feet or something. I can't remember. It's, 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 I do have it, but you can't make the setback further. What you can manage is the screening and buffer. That's what you can manage. You can say
But that setbacks over there were, were a hundred feet.
That just happens to be that site.
Right.
That's what was done then for whatever purposes, but now the state statutes tell you what the maximum setback can be.
Madam Chair, may I propose that we put an agenda item on there to review the state and our local zoning, maybe in a two or three, maybe over two meetings? Just so we're all on board, so we don't have to drink from this giant fire hose of information all in one, all, all in one setting.
That sounds great.
I, I'll bring it to you and show you what it looks like.
Yeah, if you could just bring it for the next meeting, and then we'll read it, and then everyone can kind of come up with suggest, suggestions, and then in our August meeting, we can discuss it.
Like I said, the biggest thing is just focusing on what screening methods you want. That's really where the communities are at now, what they can regulate. Um, there's few, very few other things you can regulate, but um, I could, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm not, I guess what I'm asking is, do you want me to work on a draft tax amendment? Is that what you guys are looking for? To what that would
I, I, not to speak out of turn, Madam Chair, uh, not necessarily at this time. I think I need to have more information. Do, Madam Chair, does Dennis agree with that?
Yes.
Yes.
I agree as well. So just if you could bring, you know, something, whatever the state has, or if you have
Email to you guys?
Yeah, if you could email that, that'd be great.
I'll just highlight there is a need to focus on it.
Okay.
It's So we're gonna revisit this, did you say in August?
So I think so. So to give him enough time to get going on the master plan and get that wrapped up, and then we'll go right into whatever tax amendment it's gonna be. All right, great.
I'm sorry, real quick, if um, do you have any information on transmission as well? Um, I, I don't know how these go into the, the local grid. It, um, I don't know if, like, easements is gonna be an issue as well on top of that.
Yeah, they're, they're gonna need, I mean, if, they, the idea for them is they want to be as close as possible to the grid. They don't want to get, you know, tons and tons of easements or anything of that nature. They, they're, they're eyeing those properties along the grid to get right into the energy system, for sure. They don't want to be, you know, cross-town or whatever it may be. They want to be as close as possible. That's the goal.
That, that would be something I would want to review as well, um, as a part of all this. I, I think it might be relevant.
Chunk of egg, land right next to the substation.
Yeah. Okay, I'll, I'll get ready on that.
All right. Thank you. All right, anything else from the planning commission?
Um, I, I have something.
Kevin?
I just, I, I feel it's probably a good practice to come back with uh some information. I went to the ABCs of ZBA boards.
Oh, okay.
Um, basically, it was, it was presented, I think, you know, I think it's uh, our new members, I, I, I'm pretty sure you know, but we made it a bylaw that we have to attend training. One, at least one session a year for uh commission member, and um, so I, I picked this one out uh as a, a thing, because I don't really know what the ZBA board does. It was presented by a, a attorney from mid-Michigan. Uh, I got his name here. I don't recall his name. Nonetheless, he's a, a young man, well-presented, well-spoken. Um, uh, he represents townships and municipalities primarily in lawsuits and in uh guiding their ZBAs down the narrow path that they're designed to go down. Uh, basically, it was just all about the house wise, why they exist, uh, the basic guidelines that they exist under, uh, which is primarily to uphold the application of the zoning ordinances. I mean, they're not there to really rubber stamp things. They're there to just guide people and say, this is what was intended. He gave a very, very thorough outline of the appeal process, record-keeping, uh, how to how to, how to approach the land users and landowners in their application of the zoning, so I, I thought it was very well-presented and I would highly recommend it.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, anyone else? Great, if not, if, I'll entertain a motion. Eight twenty-three adjourned.